I will call the September 5th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I do welcome those in attendance, thank you for being here. At this time, I would like for us to have a moment of silence to think about the devastation in Texas and also the people in Florida that are getting ready to face another major storm. Let's just have a moment of silence and then I'll close us with a prayer. Father God, we do thank you for this day and the blessings we have. We pray that you would give hope to those that have been injured or lost property due to the hurricane in Texas and other states as it progressed further. Oh, we pray for protection for those people in Florida that are facing a major hurricane and just be with our country during this time and give us strength, guide us, direct us tonight. Let us make wise decisions for our community and let your will be done, in Christ's name, amen. You would join me in a pledge of allegiance?
What allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all?
At this time, I would entertain a motion or adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request to adjust the agenda for item number 13 with an amendment to the resolution that's there.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner McIntyre.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to add item 14D to the consent agenda. The budget amendment for senior services.
That will be 14D?
Correct.
We've got a D already. Thank you.
My mistake.
No problem. Do we have a second?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor of the amendment adding an item 14E which deals with the senior center analysis, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number one, this is a Red Ribbon Week proclamation and our presenter is John Henderson, who's a unit commander for the Mecklenburg County chapter of the Young Marines. And with him, I'd like to recognize Young Marine Corporal Harrison. Welcome.
Thanks, sir.
And I believe you all have a proclamation you would like for the Board of Commissioners to approve, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I've asked Vice Chairman Burleson to read that proclamation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stanley County Board of Commissioners declares October 23rd through 31st, 2017 as Red Ribbon Week, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas, there is hope in winning the war on drugs and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy drug-free lifestyle. And whereas, governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23rd through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2017 as Red Ribbon Week in Stanley County, North Carolina, and to urge all citizens to join me in this special observance, adopted this the 5th day of September 2017.
Hey, Board of Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would respectfully move that we declare October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week.
And we have a first and a second, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. And I believe we need to step down and greet the young corporal and have a photo shot made. So, I believe you were here last year also.
Yes, sir.
And tell me what school you go to.
Oh, West Stanley.
West, okay, I thought you were West Stanley. Yeah. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Right, you're in the chair.
Eleven.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, planning and zoning rezoning requests from Casey Ammons. Presenter is our planning director, Michael Sandy, welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Chairman Longhorn, Board of Commissioners. Before you tonight is ZA 17-05, Mr. Casey Ammons requests to rezone approximately 1.87 acres, a lot owned by Jeffrey Mills on the southeast corner of Webb Road and NC 200, south of Stanfield, from RA residential agriculture to M1 light industrial, tax record 138483. The property is currently zoned RA, the lot surrounding the lot in question are RA also. Properties located across Webb Road and NC 200 are either within the Stanfield town limits or within the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Adjacent properties are either used for residential, agricultural, or a church and cemetery. The church, Clark's Grove Primitive Baptist Church, which no longer holds regular services, is one of the parcels. Two parcels north and west of the property, Manana Joinie, are zoned industrial by Stanley, uh, the town of Stanfield. These lots contain the Alvendale Fast, uh, Stanley Fastening Facility and Allen Storage, which was the Allen Dale Furniture Company. Mr. Ammons is proposing to use the lot for vehicle repair shop. He plans to construct a building for this purpose. The vehicle repair shop is allowed in the M1 district. The M1 district would allow him to store five vehicles outside the building. Mr. Ammons plans to have storage in a fenced-in area and because the properties are used for non-business purposes, the property and storage area must be screened to meet requirements for the zoning orders. M1 district is designed to accommodate industries and warehousing operations which can be operated in a relatively clean, quiet manner which will not be obnoxious to adjacent residential or business districts. This property is currently an open field and requires septic and a well. Pharma Health has completed testing for septic system. Permit is pending final review. Traffic on NC 200 South in this area averages 1,300 cars per day, according to NC DOT in 2015. Webb Road does not have any statistics for traffic. This property is located in the growth area per the 2010 Stanley County Land Use Plan. Planning staff recommend approval of this request due to its location on a highway and in a growth area. The planning board reviewed this at their August 14th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Michael, what are some of the, just a few of the permitted uses for M1 other than a vehicle repair?
They're typically like HVAC shops, machine shops, boat auto repair, things like that are light industrial uses, not usually committing, uh, creating smoke or odor or noise.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing none, this calls for a public hearing, so I'll declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak for this zone change? Please step forward and tell us your name.
I'm Casey Ammons. Probably like a 50 by 100 building would be what I would be doing. Like you said, I would need the light industrial to have the outside storage. I plan on trying to make it as neat and, you know, presentable as a body shop possibly can be and, you know, no broken down cars sitting outside or anything like that. I try to, you know, I want to be a team player for the community and I love the community. I only live 10 miles down the road, so any questions you have, you know, I figured I'd come up here and let y'all ask.
Any questions? Are, I do have one, are you currently in the auto repair business?
Yes, sir, 10 years.
Okay. Where are you located?
It was in Richmond County, but still is in Richmond County because that's where I was originally from. And I moved up this way probably five years ago and just been trying to find a good location to move shop, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for speaking. Is there anyone here to speak against this rezoning request? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. I believe the Board of Commissioners have heard the rezoning request, what's your pleasure?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the rezoning request.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion? All in favor of granting the rezoning request, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item number three is a presentation of the development of a statewide public transportation strategic plan on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Our transportation director Candace Moffett is our presenter, welcome Candace.
Thank you. Trying to get the, are you able to see that on your screens? Thank you for allowing me to bring this information to you on behalf of the Public Transportation Division of the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The goal of this presentation is to inform and engage our elected officials in the development of a statewide strategic plan. Any feedback or comments you'd like to have following this meeting this evening, I'll be happy to deliver at our community meeting on October 16th. North Carolina's transit customers took 74 million trips during FY16. The state's 100 transit systems provided service in all 100 counties through partnerships with cities and counties, regional authorities, community colleges and universities, human service agencies, Medicaid and other healthcare providers, DOT, and the FTA. Growing from 13 small urban bus services in 1974, each of North Carolina's 100 counties now has public transit, taking advantage of the 1975 Federal Highway Administration's Rural Public Transportation Administration program. The state became a national leader in human service transportation coordination and rural public transportation. North Carolina's largest urban centers have also developed regional transportation networks, including Light Rail in Charlotte and regional bus services in the Piedmont Triad and Research Triangle. Each of North Carolina's 100 transit agencies is unique, providing services that meet local needs and resources. Some agencies provide transit within cities only, while others are multi-county regional systems, providing a combination of human service and public services. Our collective investment in vehicles, transit facilities, and technology is delivering mobility and access to opportunities for all of North Carolina residents. While the state is considered a national leader, continued growth and an aging population will require additional investment in years to come. Building on the federal transit and funding programs established by North Carolina Transit 2001 Study Commission, during 2016, North Carolina's transit systems had $428 million in operating revenues, including 47% in local funding, 17% in passenger fares, 14% in federal funding, 13% state funding, 6% other contracted revenue, and 4% in Medicaid payments. The Transit 2001 Study Commission recommendations implemented by the General Assembly increased state funding and provided local governments with additional options for raising local transit revenues. This investment more than doubled the public transit ridership. Since 1950, North Carolina has grown from a mostly rural state of 4 million people to a state with strong and growing urban centers. In 2010, 55% of the state's 9.5 million people lived in urbanized areas with over 50,000 individuals. North Carolina's rural population has remained stable with about 4 million persons. By 2040, North Carolina is projected to add 2.4 million jobs, a 41% increase over 2016, and 3.5 million more residents, a 35% increase over 2016. Population and employment growth will strain our highway and transit systems capacity. Although NC DOT will continue to invest in our transportation network, peak period delays and increased travel times are to be expected. Continued transit investment will be needed to manage peak period capacity and maintain our quality of life in rural areas. Over the next 20 years, the average age of North Carolina's residents is expected to increase. As we live longer, the growing number of people over age 65 will present increased demand for our transit systems. According to 2015 statistics, 89% of North Carolinians over the age of 16 had a driver's license. However, the percentage of residents with a driver's license declines with age. For the 85 and older age group, only 65% had a driver's license in 2015. Since 1974, North Carolina's transit program has focused on building transit agencies locally. We have succeeded in establishing public transit services in all 100 counties. However, during that time, travel patterns have become longer, crossing city, county, and even regional boundaries. While strong local transit systems will remain the foundation of our state's transit program, the focus will shift to creating a statewide network which provides convenient, affordable, and accessible service. The strategic plan will identify avenues to strengthen state, regional, and local partnerships while presenting an incremental and long-range plan for transit investment. The plan's long-term goal will be a high-functioning public transportation network which leads to improved access to opportunities and increased ridership. The Public Transportation Statewide Strategic Plan will strengthen partnerships and develop strategies for improved transit services across the state. The work focuses around a robust stakeholder involvement process with community meetings that were held in May and will continue in October. Next spring, a strategic planning summit will bring state leaders together to receive the plan's recommendations in advance of consideration by the General Assembly. Over 300 citizens and elected officials participated in nine community meetings held throughout the state in May. Using an interactive survey tool, participants were asked to provide a word or phrase about their vision for North Carolina's public transportation network. The May community meeting participants also responded to a multiple choice question, what's the greatest challenge facing public transportation in North Carolina? The top four responses were 34% local funding, 20% state funding, 17 political boundaries, and 10% inter-agency cooperation. Their strategic plan is analyzing current and future transit markets. The state was divided into 15 analysis districts considering current and expected urbanized area boundaries. Counties that are projected to be largely urbanized are grouped together and counties that are expected to be primarily rural were analyzed separately. For each district, travel to adjoining counties and counties and neighboring states were also considered. The overall transit travel market observations were that there is a strong market for local transit services, especially in the state's larger urban areas. Travel patterns are regional for work, education, and some services. Longer distance commuting markets exist in many regions. Access to healthcare and community college require longer distance trips. Service area boundaries create barriers to opportunities, and there are emerging markets where new local bus services may be warranted. The draft version for North Carolina's transit services is connecting North Carolinians to opportunities. These services have three primary missions: deliver a seamless, frequent transit network that provides North Carolinians convenient access to employment, education, healthcare, and recreation; improve the state's quality of life by supporting economic development, promoting healthy choices, enabling independent living, and providing equality of access; and increase peak period capacity for major corridors. We want to hear from our elected officials and community stakeholders throughout this process. We completed the first round of nine community meetings in May and the second round of meetings is planned for October. At the first round, participants will share their transit ideas and groups. And the second round of meetings, we are asking feedback and input and recommendations on ways to establish, strengthen, and maintain transit partnerships regionally and statewide. You are invited to participate in the MetroQuest online survey. We need everyone's help to prioritize services that transit provides and help prioritize should these change in the future. Our next community meeting will be October 16th at the Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We invite all of our elected officials to participate. If you're unable to participate, um, we, you know, invite you to share your feedback with me and I'll be happy to deliver those at the stakeholder meetings. And the three questions that PTD is especially interested in hearing from you about, why is transit important in our community? How can we build stronger and more effective partnerships? And what programs or initiatives should be included in the statewide strategic plan? You can direct your feedback directly to the Public Transportation Division staff, their consultant, or of course, I'll be happy to deliver your feedback as well. And that's the end of the formal presentation. I'll take any questions you might have about the process or our specifications.
Any questions of Candace?
Candace, when was the, the meeting time at Rowan Cabarrus? I didn't catch the, I reached slower than where you were going, I guess.
Sorry. 12:30. I'll send an email to you all closer to the event, um, just as a reminder if you're interested in participating. And it is a full three hours, the one in May was, um, was a full day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is dental clinic presentation and we have with us Dr. Mindy Turner, who's a pediatric dentist, and, uh, welcome, Dr. Turner.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Chairman Lahan for the invitation to present on the Dental Clinic accomplishments in 2016-17. Our clinic has been in operation for 15 years. We serve 0 to 19 years of age. My role is at the clinic, I'm a board certified pediatric dentist, I'm the dental director for the county, I'm an adjunct professor for the Pediatric Department at the UNC School of Dentistry, I have hospital privileges at CHS Stanley, and I also am a member for a special needs task force with the North Carolina Oral Health Section. So, our staff is comprised of several dentists, hygienists, and assistants. I am the full-time pediatric dentist. We have one other full-time general dentist. We have two part-time general dentists that work the equivalent of one day a week, two public health hygienists, three dental assistants, one office manager, and one processing assistant. I was asked to define what a pediatric dentist is, and a pediatric dentist is a healthcare provider who normally has four years of undergraduate education, has completed four years of dental school to obtain their doctorate, and two to three years of specialty training to treat children. Part of that training includes working with medically compromised and special needs children. A written and oral examination is required to obtain your board certification. There are annual educational requirements and recertification examinations every 10 years. In addition, pediatric advanced life support recertification is required every two years. We have the two part-time general dentists that I mentioned that also have to do CPR training every two years, and then our public health dental hygienist have to have CPR and medical emergencies every year. Because they're public health status, they've also had training with the oral health section. Revenue sources, Medicaid, Health Choice, private pay and private insurance. Medicaid insurance is for the low-income families who cannot afford healthcare costs. The NC Health Choice Program is for children 6 to 18 whose families make too much to qualify for Medicaid but too little to afford private insurance. A co-pay is sometimes required. The DSS caseworkers assist in the calculation to obtain these insurances. Private pay, I guess, is self-explanatory, but it also includes the Health Department's sliding fee scale. Eligibility for this program is calculated based on household income and the household members. These families are at or below 200 to 200% of the poverty level and our scale slides to 40% for the dental clinic and the Health Department. The clinic has historically accepted the first three revenue sources and the Board of Health agreed to begin taking children with private insurance in spring of 2017. The Stanley County Dental Clinic is a cost-neutral program. No county dollars directly support our clinic operations. Funding includes clinic revenues, the staff salaries and benefits, along with the dental supplies and equipment and utilities are covered by what we generate. The county provides the space and administrative support. I note that all of our larger equipment, including the dental units, chairs, x-ray equipment, and cabinetry, were funded through grant monies. Clinical services provided at our clinic include exams, cleanings, dental health education, sealants, fillings, pulp therapies, extractions, base maintainers, flora treatments, emergency care, and nitrous oxide anxiolysis. The operating room program occurs at Carolina's Healthcare System Stanley. That's where I treat children who cannot be safely treated in the office. This includes very young children and special needs children with growth, decay, and/or access teeth. Number served in 2016-17. Number served in 2016-17, 6,626 patient encounters. We saw 132 patients in the OR program at CHS Stanley. We provided 300 pre-case screenings and 267 screenings at the Tar Heel Challenge Academy. Local accomplishments: We received a grant through the North Carolina Oral Health Section. We provided a sealant project at Albemarle Middle School in the spring of 2016, and we were able to place 600 sealants at that project. We also were able to buy supplies for clients and residents of the Monarch Program here in our county with that grant. Another grant we obtained 1617 was the Duke Endowment Grant. That was in conjunction with CHS Stanley. We received $59,000 for that grant, and we were able to provide sealants to second and third graders in our county. 509 children were screened, and we provided 1,200 sealants. The way the project worked, we took mobile equipment in that was purchased with the grant funding, and a cargo van was used to transport the units. We went into 10 elementary schools, and we provided exams and sealants to the children. School health nurses assisted us in distributing and obtaining the medical and permission forms, so we are very grateful to them. And our clinic was one out of four facilities in North Carolina and South Carolina that was chosen for this program. We also received a grant from the Blue Cross Blue Shield. We worked with the UNC School of Dentistry to do a research project. It's called Implementation Science. The title is Protocol Development for Management of Pediatric Dental Caries Using Silver-Diomy Fluoride. You probably heard about silver diomy fluoride in the media. It is an antibiotic that provides relief from dentin hypersensitivity, kills carries-causing bacteria, and it helps to harden the dentin to make it more acid-resistant. It's very cost-effective. We've been using it in our clinic for about a year and a half now. The side effect is that there's black staining in the decayed areas. We use this at our clinic to delay treatment until the patient is able to tolerate an office treatment, or to delay treatment if the child is under three years old, so that way they can be treated safely under general anesthesia in the hospital. And the dental clinic was one out of three of the safety dental clinics in the state that participated with this project. Collaboration partners with the Oral Health Section, so we could reinstate the fluoride mouth rinse program that occurred in 2016, and we're also doing this in 2017. So as many of you may know, our Oral Health Section-appointed public health hygienist position was eliminated in 2013, which left a big void for our dental education. The hygienist was employed by the state, and she had provided the oral health education in the classrooms and worked with the school nurses to take care for the students, and was also in charge of the mouth rinse program. So luckily, through some contacts we have with the Oral Health Section, we were able to reinstate that program. It's where first through fifth graders are able to rinse with a sodium rinse once weekly. Professional accomplishments: We also train dental professionals. We have rising senior dental students that I train in the operating room that occurs during the summer months. We also host UNC dental hygiene students, and we assist in training the dental assisting students from Rowan Cabarrus and Montgomery County. Future projects: We are trying to work with the Oral Health Section to establish a program that's called Mouth Care Without a Battle. We recently went into one of the Monarch Day programs, and we were able to train some staff and residents on how to better approach oral hygiene. And our hope is to do the mouth care without a battle, because it is a technique to make things a little easier for the people providing the care to the patients, and would make it also easier for the clients. And then we hope to begin a program to encourage first dental visit by first birthday. This is something that's recommended by the American Dental Association and the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry, and we would like to collaborate with our local pediatricians and other healthcare providers in order to have that happen, since prevention is the key. I have lots of thank yous for the dental sealant project. We really like to thank the school health nurses for all they've done. Also, Jane Boone helped us to acquire that grant through the CHS process that we had to go through. Debbie Krueger for helping us reinstate the mouth rinse program and trying to get started on the Mouth Care Without a Battle program. Almaral Anesthesia, who has always supported our OR program. And Almaral Pediatrics, Stanley Pediatrics, as well as Dr. Joseph Hunter and Patty Lewis, our Health Department Nurse Practitioner, who does our history and physicals for the OR program. Pfeiffer University is able to provide housing for our dental students during the months that they're here, which is awesome for them. And Debbie Bennett, who is my AV person, who helps with the grant writing, who supports the dental project by going to health fairs and taking our brochures, and just for everything she does to support what we do. Also, a special thanks to the dental clinic staff, because they see many children with dental needs, special needs, complicated medical histories, and treating young children in general can be a challenge, but they do a great job of it, and they work very hard, especially with salaries that aren't competitive with private practice. And my last thank you would be to our Health Director, Dennis Joyner, who supports our program and has for many years. And that's all I have. The next one is contact information, if you know of anyone who can use our services. And thank you.
Dr. Turner, that was a very interesting presentation, and it's like I told you when I met with you, that I had no idea what you all did, or how many employees were employed in the dental clinic. Please go back from me and tell your staff and you, we appreciate what you're doing for our pediatric dentist patients in this county, and I think it's very informative of what you told us. Now, I want to make sure I understand, your patients are 0 to 19?
That's correct.
Okay. But I appreciate your efforts and your staff's efforts. Any other commissioners want to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioner Lahan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, real quick. Dr. Turner, could you, is there an update available on the program that we tried to get started a couple, two months ago?
So our first patient did qualify under the hardship policy through CHS at a 25% discount, and that's as far as we've gotten. It's a pilot project, so we're still trying to gather information on that, so I won't present back to the board until I have all of that.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Item number five, several requests. Our Utilities Director, Ms. Donna Davis. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to present all the items I have given you this week for review. And with that, we're going to start with the first one on your list. I'd like to ask you for consideration of authorization to apply for grant funding and approval of an application resolution. This grant funding would come from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, their Division of Water Infrastructure, and we would be seeking state funding, hopefully as a grant, and/or the opportunity for state loan and grant, if the state grant is not awarded, SRF loan and grant, to install two tri-hello methane removal and supplemental chlorine injection systems in some areas of our distribution system that are experiencing And this would help eliminate some of those hydrants we see flowing continuously throughout certain times of the year, and we do that to improve the water quality and maintain water quality according to Department Environmental Quality standards. And so if we could get some of these, this additional infrastructure in place, we could supplement the treatment that we're receiving from the city of Albemarle and put less water on the ground.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the grant application and accept the resolution as presented.
Do we have a first, by Commissioner Swain, and a second by Vice Chairman Bertelson? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is a list of three particular portions of our policies. These policies date back to more than 15 years, some of them probably back to the very beginning of the system almost 40 years ago. And what we're requesting is that they be updated or eliminated as requested, based on the changes in what we're able to provide, the nature of our services, the demands of the community, all the changes that have occurred over the last 15 to 40 years. And so I've broken them down individually, so that you can consider them either as individual items or as a group. But we have utility system rules and regulations for disconnections of services for non-payment. We also have rules and regulations that reflect how we do a billing adjustment for someone who has a leak. And then number three, the water main extension policy. At one time, the county did a reimbursable program. They've not done that program in over 15 years, and we'd like to remove that from the document.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the requested policy updates.
So you're saying all three of these?
Yes, yes, sir. That's all in all, approved.
First and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, you all have seen before, multiple times, and because of the nature of our funding through USDA, it is required that we have a language access program for limited English proficiency citizens in our community. This is the same thing that we have adopted for the Water and Sewer Authority, as required for their funding through USDA. It's the same thing that has been done for Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District, per their funding for USDA, and it's similar to what other agencies within county government have to adopt in order to receive their federal funding. So I request approval of the Stanley County Utilities Language Access Plan, and this is related to the funding, USDA funding, for the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant.
Ms. Davis, one question I have. Who pays for the interpreters if they're hired?
We do.
Have we got it in our budget to pay for those?
To be honest, we've never had a request. I've had this thing in place for at least five years through CDBG funding. We have never had a request. So if there were a request of the phone system, or to get someone from another department that may be able to assist us, the Utilities Department would pay for it.
I know, reading your documents, somewhere I saw a number of 1,000 estimated non-English speaking. Did I miss something?
That may have been the case. In terms of, the way this program works is we do provide certain documents in Spanish, because Spanish is a secondary language spoken in the county, but the rule requires that we provide language assistance to anyone who asks for any language that is requested. So in that case, there are services that we can use, and usually, we would schedule a time to meet with that person, so that we could either get a phone interpreter set up, or some type of provision for them, so that they could make sure that they understand the services that are available, and all the policies that go along with it. But we've never had to use it.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the Stanley County Utilities Language Access Plan.
Do we have a first and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the Stanley County Utilities Language Access Plan, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And at this time, sir, I'd like to request a meeting of the Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District for the final agenda item.
Okay. Item number six, we're going to recess the county commissioner meeting, and I need a motion to go into the Greater Baytown Water and Sewer Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recess the Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting and go into the Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District meeting.
I have a first and a second, Commissioner Swain. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now in the Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District Authority.
The request associated with this particular agenda item has to do with transferring a deed of easement from Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District to Stanley County. All these entities, while they're operated by the same group, have their own particular jurisdiction in terms of who owns the infrastructure legally, and in this particular case, one of the easements associated with our airport project was deeded to Greater Baytown in error. And so in an effort to correct this error, we're requesting that Greater Baytown transfer that deed of easement to Stanley County Utilities, so that it will be properly documented in terms of who is the rightful, responsible party.
You heard Ms. Davis's request. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman? I move that we approve the assignment of easements and right-of-way for sanitary sewer lines.
We have a first and a second. I believe Commissioner Morgan, second motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion's, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Davis. I need a motion to come out of the Greater Baytown Water and Sewer District and go back into the recess meeting. Commissioner McIntyre, seconded by Commissioner Swain. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now back in the regular scheduled county commissioner board meeting. Item number seven, human service consolidation. Our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The board has previously discussed the issue of consolidation of our county's health and social service functions into one agency. Board's reviewed information from the school government. We've analyzed survey data from other counties, evaluated the various governance options available under North Carolina Session Law 212-126. Additionally, the county held a public hearing to comply with North Carolina General Statute You have a resolution authorizing consolidation and directing the existing Board of Health and DSS boards to make nominations for appointments to the new Consolidated Human Services Board, if you choose to take that action by no later than Friday, October 20, with the idea that you would potentially take action November 6, I believe is the date, where you could then take those nominations and appoint a Health and Human Services Board. So the action you're being requested to take this evening is consider approving a resolution to consolidate the county's health and social service functions into one agency with a separate Human Services Governing Board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of County Manager Lucas? Hearing none. You all hear the request. What would the board like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented here, and also name County Manager, the Director of the new consolidated. Can we?
You won't be able to do any action until the board's in place, because you'll have to have a, the Human Services Board has to be officially named by the Board of County Commissioners first, so if there's a nomination process, then if the board were to take action November 6, at that point in time, there could, you'd have to, you need the advice and consent of that new Human Services Board. So at that point in time, I would ask the, I could ask the new Human Services Board for their advice and consent to appoint myself as interim director, or somebody else as interim director at that time. But it would be, I think it would be premature to do that until the Human Services Board's actually in place, per the statute.
Okay. So basically, I amend my motion to basically just make the motion to approve the resolution as presented.
We have a motion to approve the resolution of consolidation as presented. Do we have a second? Commissioner Swain, second motion. Any discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go on record saying that there are parts of consolidation that I can see a benefit, mainly with bringing all of our employees. a benefit, mainly with bringing all of our employees under the County Personnel Act. It's a major one. I think it would be good for employees. But we've had three limited discussions as a board about consolidation. It was brought up briefly at our retreat in February, again during budget deliberations at one time, and then at the public hearing. And I just don't, I know we've got lots of information from our county manager and staff, and I applaud them for that, but it just don't feel like our board has really sat down together to discuss, you know, option two, is that the plan? Or does that lead us? I've seen no organizational chart except what option two presents. I hadn't talked about how many members, and I guess this is going to come next. I just have to say that I had one of our citizens to say to me, "Sounds like you're taking a page out of Nancy Pelosi's playbook. You got to pass it before you can see what's in it." So with that said, those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, please. I would echo what Gina said, but I would say that the people that came up and spoke before the Board of Commissioners at the last minute expressed a lot of their concerns. And their concerns also have not been answered. We've been provided a lot of information from staff, but I think we have to get more specific and ask those questions on those points that those eight people came before us and spoke about. And I thank you.
Any other comments before we vote?
Can we have a comment from the floor? Chairman?
Not, yes, we've already had public hearing.
I understand.
Let me consult our attorney because we don't normally do that.
I understand. I just thought maybe.
She said I could do it if I wanted to. I want to. But please limit your conversation.
Take it a little bit. Thank you so much. I'm Larry Faulkner. I'm chairman of the Stanley County Board of Health. And last meeting, and y'all voted a little bit to carry this over. And the two commissioners that have served on the boards, Jean McIntyre served on the Health Board with me, Jen Lauter serving on the Health Board with me at the present time, they know how the Health Board works. They know how our department works. You just got through talking to our, listening to our pediatric dentist. I would say that she's worth her weight in gold, but I would have to double that because she's so small. She's just one part of our department that is just excellent. And I'll just tell you right quick, our director, our Health Director is the best that we've had in the eighteen years that I've been associated with the Health Board. You had a lot of folks to speak to you last meeting to tell you what, how good everything was running. And it was pretty obvious that five of you didn't listen to a word that was said. You already had your mind made up, and that I'm sorry for. We do not need to combine these departments because you're going to have a problem with a big, large board taking care of both departments. You're going to have, our meeting is generally run an hour, hour and a half with a large number of people on the board and two boards and two departments to worry about. You're going to have a four-hour meeting. You're going to have professional people sitting on all these boards that are not going to put their time in to spend that much time listening to what's going on in the county with their departments. Like I said before, like I told you last meeting, you folks don't want this job. I can tell you right now, you don't want it. It's not that hard a job, but it's just that it's, I don't know, it's a labor of love, I guess you'd say. Leon wanted to know how come I spent eighteen years on it. I said, "Well, I like my, I love my county, and it was just something that I liked to do." But anyway, folks, I thank you. Everyone had a vote, goes, we'll live with it, but it ain't going to be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Let's raise our hands. Close, please, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries, four to three. Number eight is the emergency radio system follow-up. Presenter is county manager Andy Lucas and Brian Simpson, our EMS director.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually going to get on the podium for that presentation. Waiting to see if you all can see that up there. All right, great. Well, thank you. I've got Brian here to answer any technical questions. He certainly has worked closer with the system than I have. But we wanted to give you an update of, you know, we had talked during budget about some coverage issues. And so the system's 100% operational. The system was designed to be 95% on-street coverage guarantee, which it does. The overall feedback from first responders has been overwhelmingly positive across the county. There are issues with coverage in the eastern section of the county, which is adjacent to the areas around Marl Mountain because of the shading of the mountain. And coverage issues are not unique to Stanley County. There are coverage issues on 800, you know, and 700 systems all throughout, not only Stanley County. Rowan County system has coverage issues. Cabarrus County system has coverage issues. Mecklenburg County has coverage issues. They've been trying, it's my understanding, they've been trying for eight years to build a tower in the town of Davidson, and they haven't been able to justify it, for whatever reason, at this point. But it sounds like it's moving closer. They also have significant issues in the Valentine area with their system. So this isn't unique to Stanley County. Many counties have been dealing with these coverage issues for a long time. Our coverage maps, you can see the existing on-street coverage. The one on the left is what is there today. And you can see, obviously, there's some white over primarily in the eastern part of our county, adjacent to Marl Mountain. We've looked at the projected on-street coverage if we were to build a fifth tower site adjacent to Eastside Volunteer Fire Department at 480 feet. Keep in mind, our existing towers that we built were 300 feet. So this would be 400, this would be a 480-foot structure. And you can see, obviously, it does improve, certainly, you know, as you go down closer to 2427 and Valley Drive. But the area sort of north Falls Road and up behind the mountain still stays with some coverage issues. Another potential projected fifth tower site would be, could be Guard Road, which the county owns that property. As you can see, it doesn't do quite as well on 2427 area, but it does better along Falls Road and Baytown and that area in terms of filling in coverage. You can obviously see, there's a ridge, which is the creek that Commissioner Eford has to drive over every evening on his way back. There's really not very many people who live right there in that creek basin, so that's why you don't hear folks complaining about coverage issues. And the same can be said along the Rocky River, down to the southern part of the county. We also looked, because of the Guard Road site is potentially, or it's in the airport overlay, we have sent a request to FAA to take a look at that. Our concern is we wouldn't be able to build a tower there of over 180 feet. And so you can see what happens if you, the projected coverage for 180 feet there, it doesn't do quite as well as the 480s, either Eastside or Guard Road. But it's certainly better than the existing on-coverage street, coverage today. The advantage of Guard Road is we already own the property. You don't have to grade in a road. You don't have to, you know, getting electricity to the site's going to be far cheaper. Obviously, your access road is going to be far cheaper. I mean, we averaged 75,000 a site when we did the other three towers that we built. Obviously, we believe we could do that one for far less than that, just based on all the infrastructure and everything that's already there at the site. I think your estimate for Eastside would be closer to that 75,000. We also looked at a fifth site on Falls Road, which again helps certainly around Marl Mountain and Baytown area more so than the other two. But we still have, this one hasn't been fully evaluated yet of whether it's feasible and whether Alcoa, which is the landowner, would even work with us on doing a 480-foot tower there. But that's the, we just brainstormed some potential locations where we could do it. And certainly, again, it's better, but there still are going to be coverage gaps. I guess the long story short is, no matter where we put a 480-foot tower, you're still going to have coverage gaps because of that mountain and the terrain, you know, short of putting one on top of Marl Mountain, which is not going to happen anytime soon because of the regulations you have with the park. And even once you did, we've been told by our technical experts that you'd still have shading around areas of the mountain where you would have issues with coverage, even if you did have one on top of the mountain. We've also looked at in-building coverage. As you can see, in-building coverage is certainly not as great as out-on-street coverage. Again, the system's designed to be 95% on-street coverage. But you can see what the difference, the fifth site at Eastside versus a fifth site at Guard Road at 480 would do with respect to filling, helping fill in some of that in-building coverage. And then again, with a fifth site at 180 at Guard Road, again, it's better, but certainly still leaves that area around Marl Mountain with some coverage issues. Again, it's not that densely populated in that area. You can kind of see, just in terms of call volume, total first responder calls the past 12 months, there were 72 to that area that we're, we've sort of defined. And that's bridges sort of Baytown's fire district as well as, and area as well as Eastside's, portions of both. So you're looking at about six calls a month in that area, 0.2 a day. Total fire calls in the last 12 months was 26, so 2.2 calls a month. So you, about total calls for first responder or fire, about 98 in a 12-month period, 8.2 calls a month. So that's about 2.27 calls a day. To contrast that, the city of Albemarle's Fire Department, first responder and calls, they run 212 calls per month versus eight calls a month, at seven calls a day, roughly. So there's quite a bit of difference in terms of call volume in that area versus what you see in a more densely populated area. We talked about the DVRS technology before during the budget, and we tested the DVRS technology. The DVRS technology works really well where there is, where we can get a radio signal. And I want to say it's 40 RSI, is that the technical term, Brian?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, you know, power signal on the radios. If you can get a 50% and you use the DVRS, it really helps boost that power and helps from the in-building out to the street. But the problem is, if you don't have radio coverage with your portable radio, your handheld, then the DVRS is, really doesn't provide any real significant advantage. So it does help in-building coverage where you have portable coverage, but it doesn't help where you don't have portable coverage, portable coverage to start with. So I think it's a technology that some of the fire departments may want to deploy to help with their in-building coverage, but it certainly isn't going to be a technology that we can just give, put in the Eastside District and address some of their coverage gap concerns. So what options exist? We could look at developing a patch with the Viper system at Buck Mountain. Buck Mountain's just across the river. That needs to be tested further to evaluate operational viability and location of the coverage gaps. And 911 would not be able to monitor the channel for both volunteer fire and law enforcement. So, you know, you could, that patch could work for Eastside, but it wouldn't be able to help, you know, Baytown's law enforcement side. So you could use it if Baytown Fire and Eastside wanted to use it to help with them, but it's still Baytown law enforcement, couldn't also be on that patch. 911 would not be able to monitor both channels. So there's a drawback to Buck Mountain. But it could help, you know, the volunteer fire departments on their coverage. Because what we're hearing is more of that in-building concern. Then there's the builder leased a fifth tower site. It's about approximately 1.9. We believe that's a high number, and it's a conservative number because we've gotten some quotes from another tower construction provider that could do the construction for cheaper. But you're going to have, and then you're going to have, so you've got approximately 1.9. You've got that 750,000 of Civil, and we do believe that would be cheaper at Guard Road. We can get a grant from UWASI, the Urban Area Security Initiative that we're part of, with Mooresville, Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, Cabarrus County, Union County, am I missing one? And Gastonia are all part of our regional radio system. We can get a grant for them for 300,000 to help offset the cost of the microwaves and some other technology that would bring that 1.9 down to around 1.5 million and probably a little less because we can get, we believe we can get the tower constructed for cheaper. But again, this isn't going to address all the coverage issues. So even spending this money is not going to address them all. But, you know, and also, if you buy the 300,000, if you use that UWASI grant, if we ever were to decide to come away from UWASI, then those assets would have to go back to UWASI to be deployed among their counties that are part of that system. So proposed tech, next steps, we can continue to evaluate the feasibility and cost of a Viper patch for Buck Mountain, further evaluate costs and feasibility of tower locations. Like I said, we've submitted the Guard Road site to the FAA to find out, can we do 480? Whereas Eastside, is 180 is max. Eastside Volunteer Fire Department, you know, they're moving their current location on 2427 back because of the road expansion, 2427 widening. And so reviewing their cost of clearing and land and grading and access road. So if we can maybe potentially collaborate, we can help bring down some of that site, site preparation cost. And I think we need to assess the feasibility and cost of Falls Road site, if that's even possible, because that may be a better site for us. I think we need to continue to track the issues and work closely with the radio system partners to identify solutions and provide you with an update at the planning retreat. I'm not sure we can do anything in advance of that, just because of the costs we're talking about. It's a lot of money to do this. And obviously, it's not a very densely populated area, so you don't have a tremendous amount of calveine. And I understand the risk that these folks are taking when they do go into a structure and there was, if there is a fire and being able to get that. But the amount of calveine we're talking about is very small relative to, you know, other areas of the county. And so I'll be, want to stop there. That's the update we have from what happened since we last talked at the budget. And I want to answer any questions you may have, and certainly Brian's available for any technical questions you may have about the system.
Any questions of county manager Lucas?
Mr. Chairman.
Andy, can you go back in the slide to the last map?
I'm just going to end this and start over. Yeah, this is, this one? In-building coverage or?
I don't see anything.
You don't, okay.
Anyway, look.
Hopefully he's come, it should be come back up.
Looking at your map, there was a, there was a black on the, on the map on the right side, there's a.
That's Buck Mountain.
Okay. Have we looked at possibly using that tower? I'm assuming there is a tower there?
Yes.
Have we looked at using that tower to put the UWASI equipment on?
Yes.
Is that too far, or is that?
No, I think that's, that's one of the things we'd have to look at, is not only creating the patch with the Viper system, because they already have the technology, but if we actually put our technology on that tower, if the tower can handle our, is weighted, we may have to pay to enhance that tower so we could put our equipment on it. But that's another, that's another option we could.
Have we looked at possibly using that tower? I'm assuming there is a tower there?
Yes.
Have we looked at using that tower to put the UWASI equipment on?
Yes.
Is that too far, or is that?
No, I think that's, that's one of the things we'd have to look at, is not only creating the patch with the Viper system, because they already have the technology, but if we actually put our technology on that tower, if the tower can handle our, weight is weighted, we may have to pay to enhance that tower so we could put our equipment on it. But that's another, that's another option we could potentially look at. We'd have to run the projected maps. Did we done the Buck Mountain one? I'm trying to think we did.
We did the coverage map, saw five, but that tower's just full. And so they would have to be some, some structural analysis and upgrading if that were to come in fruition.
But that may be possible if the tower.
As long as it's not full, and, and we can't answer that, because that tower's owned by the state. But they'll be able to provide if it's even, if it can even carry any additional equipment.
If it, if not, we'd have to do a struc, most likely what they would do is make us pay for the structural analysis. And we, you know, get a company to do that. And then, if there were upgrades to the structure that had to be made to be able to hang our equipment on that and not create, um, um, an issue with their existed, the, the, um, not damage their tower and their equipment in, in a way, or put that at risk, then potentially, we'd wanna run the. I, I was thinking we ran, actually ran the maps on that, Brian, and.
We did, we, we've got the maps.
They're not as good as the four-eighties, certainly in our county. They may be as good as the one-eighty, uh, in our county. And it certainly would be a cheaper, I mean, obviously, much cheaper, especially because we would be able to get UWASI grants to help with that, three, that three-hundred-thousand dollars in technology could be applied to that. It doesn't matter where we put it, as long as it's ours.
Right. I, I'm assuming the, the tower cost and the site prep and readiness is probably, what, seventy-five percent of that?
No, actually, it's probably the opposite. The, the, the site prep and the tower's only about three or four-hundred thousand. Your cost is in the technology, the microwaves and the frequencies and the channels and all that stuff that goes in your building.
Andy, do we, do we know for sure? We haven't been turned about, down by the FCC, I mean, the.
Now, we don't know for sure. We've just, we've talked to the folks in Charlotte who've obviously dealt with this issue, you know, they've been, you know, worked with Union County. They've worked with, you know, Cabarrus County and Gastonia and Mooresville in the past and where they've run into these issues. So they sort of, they said to us, it's very likely that you're gonna be, they're not gonna let you do anything over one-eighty if they let you do anything at all. But we're, I mean, it is literally within a half mile of being outside the airport overlay. And so, I mean, it's right on the fringe. So I, they, they may come back and say, you're fine, as long as you put certain kinds of lights up there. But then, the more lights you put on there, the more maintenance you have, because then you gotta go up there and, you know.
That, the, the map, did you do a map on the four-eighty?
Yes. Right, the, uh, you can see the East Side and, um, Guard Road. I mean, obviously, you know, obviously, they're hell, helpful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andy or Brian, is, is there not a cellphone tower right there near East Side?
Yes, right near Indian Mount Road.
Right, have we looked at any thing, any projections from that site? We did.
Coverage map off of it. It's a hundred and ninety feet. And there again, that, we'll just, it, anything that we do on their tower's gonna be the same process. We'll have to do the analysis and then rent the space.
And it helps the Claude Felter area, twenty-four-twenty-seven, it helps there, does a good job. It doesn't do as well up towards Baden and that side of Marl Mountain. So it's, um, you sort of have a similar to the East Side one, where you see that, um, going, the middle one there, it sort of leaves that area open as compared to the Guard Road. So it's, it's very similar to that in terms of its coverage. It, it leaves the Baden area a little more susceptible to coverage issues. But it's, 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 it's an option, but that one's one-eighty, is that right?
It's less, it's less than two-hundred, I believe, exactly.
Our ordinance doesn't allow them to be over two-hundred feet in Stanley County. So, I mean, the only ones that are gonna be over two-hundred feet are ones we construct.
Any other questions?
I'll just comment, really. I mean, I, I would think we may want to talk to the state about that site in Montgomery County. And being that it's, you know, gonna enhance some of our mountain, it may be a possibility we can talk to them about some sort of a grant or get them to do the study for us, some sort of partnership with them.
I mean, it's, it's potential that, you know, we work together, they, they could, there could be some advantage to us being there and putting technology there that they could then patch to help with the Montgomery County side. So, yeah, we can certainly open up that dialogue. There, tho, those that use the Viper system over there, yes, yes. But they only have that one tower, so, I mean, they, you know, if they were gonna, if they were gonna have a radio, you know, it's county-wide radio system, they would have to construct more towers. Or they would have significant coverage gaps. I mean, you just have really that one.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas.
So I, I, we'll just proceed, we'll continue to analyze this and bring you back and update you. And certainly, we'll check the, the cell tower at Indian Mount. We'll talk with the state, continue to have those conversations and put together costs and be prepared to talk about this in February at your retreat.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call for a five-minute recess. ER at item number nine, Locust Firework Approval. Presenter is our County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. The, um, the next request is for Locust, um, to do fireworks on September sixteenth or at or near nine o'clock. And they will be held in conjunction with another civic event that the City of Locust is having that evening. And so the requested actions is consider approving, uh, the City of Locust to have that fireworks display on Saturday, September sixteen.
Thank you. Pleasure aboard.
Chairman, make a motion to approve the request for the fireworks.
Second.
First, Commissioner McIntyre, second, Commissioner Lauter. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item number ten, uh, Locust Water Distribution Subcommittee. Presenter, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The City of Locust has requested the county explore opportunities to partner and collaborate with them possibly on the provision of public water services. I believe ultimately, Locust, uh, is seeking the ability to directly, um, to become a direct water system provider. And obviously, I think that's partly due to their sewer and not having the water revenue. Staff is recommending a subcommittee of the board be designated to meet with staff and representatives from the City of Locust to learn more about their issues, concerns, and, and plans, and how there may be opportunities to, to collaborate or partner, um, if the board so chose. You know, I've, I've had some, had some initial conversations with Caesar and, uh, and even Commissioner Effer was part of those, as was all this planning role of the City of Locust. And, and certainly, I understand their financial, um, dilemma, um, with respect to their sewer, not having the water revenue to help offset it. At the same time, you know, adding another water provider, you know, it sort of moves in the direction that some of you haven't wanted to move in, which is more consolidated model of, of water, uh, and sewer. So it may be an opportunity to, to hear what they have to say and, you know, potentially for us to have a conversation about sewer. The problem with sewer is they have a lot of debt and they're, they have a lot of needs. And so if you're gonna jump in that business, that you better, we need to jump in with eyes wide open too, uh, and not put the rest of our water system, uh, and the rates that we've been able to provide at risk, because we've taken on more than we can chew. And so I think it's, I think there's a time there, uh, for a conversation. I also believe, you know, with the City of Locust in, in, um, in Cabarrus County, maybe there's opportunities there to, to potentially partner on the, you know, the provision of water by them in Cabarrus County instead of us being that direct water provider. And then we could sell it to them, and certainly would sell it to them at higher rates than we provide water to folks in Stanley County. But that they would then have the responsibility of serving those folks, and there may be some potential for revenue there. I think the palette of, of ideas and conversations is wide open. I think they're just hoping to engage in some conversation, to see what can happen. So with that, I'm asking that you appoint two or three members to, to go and sit with the City of Locust folks and, uh, just, uh, talk and brainstorm and see what you all can come up with. Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, County Manager Lucas, I know you asked for two or three, but I would, personally, I think we only need two. And the reason being is, uh, Commissioner Effer's not gonna be on that subcommittee, but he will probably be at the meetings. And if you have three and he's there, you gotta quorum, so you have a public meeting. So I would recommend two volunteers. Do we have two volunteers that would be willing to serve on that subcommittee?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd be glad to serve. I was part of the discussions out there with, uh, us taking over the, uh, main line on Big Lake Road, so I'm very knowledgeable about it, be, be happy to do it.
Okay, we've got one volunteer. Do we have a second volunteer? Mr. Effer, what time do they normally meet?
We, we've just met, uh, twice so far, and it's been during the day. But, I mean, I'm not saying that something can't be flexible with that. And it's basically, you know, just like Andy said, it's, it's conversation, uh, just some ideas that, you know, we'd like to bounce off the, the county. And in turn, the county could, you know, bounce off us, just trying to, uh, make the, the system out there sustainable. It's what we're trying to do. But, yeah, I, I think it'd be flexible.
I believe you have volunteered, and I believe your application has been accepted, Commissioner Swine. Okay, uh, I don't think we need a motion for volunteers, so let's, uh, go to.
Do we need to set up a committee?
Probably should, because I think it's a formal subcommittee. I mean, you don't have to have a formal subcommittee, you just, you could just say it, and then it's not a formal subcommittee, which is, A, actually, technically would be a better route, it's just an informal. Two commissioners have been tasked with having that conversation. I think that's better than setting up a formal subcommittee.
Yeah, it, it certainly, we had the regulatory committee and certainly had to take notes. And, you know, it just, you had to have, make sure you had more folks there.
Okay. Item number eleven, Boarding Committee Appointments. Department of Social Services Board presenter is Tammy Schrecker.
Good evening. Um, I bring before you a reappointment of Nancy Smoke. She has served three years on the Social Services Board. And her term has expired, and she's eligible for an additional three-year appointment. She does have an application on file.
What's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, the reappointment of Ms. Nancy Smoke to the DSS Board.
Second.
Okay, we have multiple seconds. I'll leave, uh, Commissioner Lauter, second to the motion first. Nancy Smoke be reappointed, uh, Social Services Board, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Smoke has been reappointed. Jury Commission presenter, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Paul Carpenter's term has expired. And he actually, um, decided not to seek reappointment, uh, having served two consecutive terms. Enclosed, you have three volunteer applicants for consideration, uh, for a two-year term that would actually expire, um, June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Swine.
I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. Andy Effer for that position. I'm sorry, William Effer.
Nomination for Mr. William Effer, do we have a second?
Second, that's who I'm nominating as well.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor of William Effer, please say aye. Any opposed? William Effer, Mr. Man. Region F Aging Advisory Committee presenter, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Chairman, um, Ms. Abernathy's term expired on June thirtieth. So the, the board's looking for, uh, an appointment. Ms. Abernathy, uh, has agreed to serve, but she'd have to do it in an alternate, uh, position. She's unable to serve as a delegate after having served three terms. And there's no applicants on file. I think we're requesting that Ms. Abernathy be pointed as an alternate this evening and that we continue to put the word out that we're looking for folks to serve on this committee that you could have, uh, in a, um, a full delegate position. So the, the action we're asking you to do, take this evening is actually appoint Ms. Abernathy as an alternate to that, uh, Region F Aging Advisory Committee. And that would allow her to at least attend meetings until you can get, uh, a delegate in place.
Thank you. What the board'd like to do?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move we appoint, uh, Ms. Abernathy as the alternate.
Do we have a second? Commissioner McIntyre, second to the motion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
I do have one question. Are these, um, committees, like, I, I know they're advertised on the, the website, but are the ones that's needing people? Or is just, if you wanna serve on a committee, trying to get the word out, other than.
We have an open, oh, an open, open application process for any board. I mean, obviously, some need appointments currently and some don't. But, you know, this is one of them that could use some applications.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item number twelve, Sheriff's Office Incentive Paper, SWAT and K-9 Personnel. Presenter is Commissioner Ashley Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in the springtime, um, I had made a, a presentation regarding incentive pay, uh, with the Sheriff's Office. We talked, we spoke about it, um, at our budget retreat and, uh, workshops in, uh, June. Basically, this is a continuation of it. Back in June, we, um, decided to table this till I could speak with it, till we could speak with the sheriff in regards to him, uh, taking over merit, um, as a lump sum in addition to receiving an additional seventy-five-hundred dollars, um, which basically gives, um, each member of the SWAT and K-9 unit an additional five-hundred dollars a year. I've asked the sheriff to be here, um, and that way, if y'all have any questions or if he would like to make a statement, um, Sheriff, if you'd like to come up.
Welcome, Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've discussed this issue a couple of times. I appreciate y'alls. Thanking all of this for the past few months. We've done several studies throughout the Sheriff's Office, throughout our local region, of what they do for their CERT members, for what they do for the K-9, also, honor guard and education, all this. I've gave you two pieces of paper that show you our team members for the CERT team, some bullet points on some of their duties they have to do. I've also give you some K-9 bullet points about what our K-9 deputies do on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. I believe that we should look after these folks. They put their lives on the line. They are called out multiple times per week, per month. They only, they don't only wear one hat, they wear multiple hats at the Sheriff's Office, and they do it because they love the cities, they love the county, and they love the citizens. But when you're kicking in the door of a non, non-drug dealer and you're risking your life, doing it for free just isn't good. Five-hundred dollars for a whole year, that's a start. And I applaud you all for looking into this and thinking about it. But when these guys have to be somewhere within thirty minutes, they're on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If there's an active shooter, if there's a barricaded subject, if I need them, they're activated, they come. Whether it's one in the morning or four in the morning, they're there. These K-9s, they not only do Sheriff's Office duties, they're asked to come out to all other seven municipalities throughout this county and assist with searches, tracking, drug identification. They do all our dare, uh, projects, they come to the fair, they do anything they're asked to do. Those four guys put in a lot of hard work and time, basically, for free. So this is a great way to get this off the ground for our incentives, so we can be competitive with all our surrounding counties, because the majority of them do have a program. So I appreciate y'all looking into it, and I would ask that you consider this. And, and one thing I just wanna put out there, in two thousand and fifteen, there was a hundred and twenty-four law enforcement officers killed in this nation. Last year, it went up to a hundred and thirty-five. That is one law enforcement officer every two and a half days in this nation is being killed in the line of duty. These team members and K-9 handlers at the top of that list. So five-hundred dollars a year is a small amount to pay for our county's safety and the professionalism everyone of these members bring to this county and the Sheriff's Office. I'm proud of them. I believe each and every one of you are. Now I believe it's time we show them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions of the sheriff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I've got any questions of the sheriff, but it may lead into that. I was just gonna ask, Mr. Morgan, um, are you looking to, you're just looking to increase, uh, a budget line item to the Sheriff's Office of seventy-five-hundred dollars, uh, so that he can use it to incentivize his K-9 officers and SWAT team members?
Yeah, basically, um, the way we had talked about it in June is, the sheriff will be taking over his merit allocation as a lump sum, um, and then this will be in addition to seventy-five-hundred dollars. $7,500 on top of that for this.
Okay. Is that, Sheriff, is that what you're understanding, and you're comfortable with something like that?
Yes, sir. A lot of counties do a percentage. I'm not much of a percentage person. I want you guys to know what you're putting in every year. Most counties do 2% or 4%. Well, if you've got a 10-year veteran at 4%, compared to a two-year veteran at 4%, it's going to cost the county more. This is going to be a one-time bonus per year for these 11 SERC members and our four K-9s, just a one-time check to say, this is for your year, this is for all the calls you're going to get out, just to give them one-time check per year. That's what two counties I know do, and then a couple other counties do a percentage, but I want you all to know what you're voting for every year.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I certainly support all our employees, and certainly support the Sheriff's Office, and I've talked with Sheriff many times about this, and, you know, he's told me it's, it's an issue, and I believe these folks need some sort of incentive for the extra work that they put in, and off-duty things that they do, and, you know, $7,500. So, I move that we approve the additional $7,500 and let the Sheriff receive the total amount of merit. Is that appropriate time for this year?
We have a first and a second. Do we have any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Yes, sir.
...one question, and I think it's just some further clarification in talking with the county manager. This, this motion would, in my, if I'm understanding it correctly, would do away with merit at the Sheriff's Department and give him a lumpsof money, lump sum of money to distribute how he sees fit, correct? Am I understanding that correctly? So, whatever he would have received in merit plus $7,500?
That is correct.
Okay.
And...
Oh, hey, it's last year.
I think there does need to probably be an amendment to that motion. That amendment would be that the Sheriff not be able to use more than the maximum amount that is appropriate per employee, and whatever our cap is, I think this year, our cap per employee was 1,750.
It was 2,000 this year.
2,000 this year. I think that does need to be in there, so that, you know, just to be careful with what we're doing.
And Sheriff, you're okay with that? You're, I'm just, I'm just thinking, and it's like when I talked to you on the phone, that's going to take some, some personnel time. The way, the way we worded this tonight, it's going to take somebody some time in January to sit down and divvy out to all your deputies how much.
Well, that's okay, because, not tooting my own horn, but I'm the one that does that.
Okay.
I look at every evaluation myself, and they get the fair amount, and no one will get over their fair amount. As long as it gives these members this bonus, I will, I'll do what y'all need me to do.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Swain, I kind of talked to the Sheriff about that. I shared that same concern, and, you know, for him, you know, making sure I was looking out, you know, for everybody here, and Sheriff said he's willing to take on, you know, the extra time and effort to make that happen, to take care of his guys, and so, if he's willing to do it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Chairman, a point of further clarification. This is to remain in January, this is going to be distributed in January, the 7,500 included?
That was the intentions of my motion.
Other questions? I want to make sure I understand the motion. The motion is to allow the Sheriff to take the merit increase pool and distribute it as he sees it, I guess, based on personnel performances, and then an additional $7,500 that would also be distributed to the K-9 and SWAT officers. Is that going to be based on $500 per, or is it going to be based on what the Sheriff wants to distribute?
Be $500 per, there's 15 of them, so 500 a person.
Yes, sir.
That would, that would be the intentions of that, and...
Not to exceed the 2,000 to any, any employee.
That's correct. And also, further note, just as a side note, that if this Board, you know, elected not to do a merit increase in a particular year, you know, that, those funds would not, obviously not be there.
All right, the $7,500, is this a one-time, is this a one-time bonus?
Well, I would think right now, we're going to have to continue, we're going to have to continue putting this in the budget every year, so I think when this comes back up in the next budget year, we're going to have to have this discussion.
You're also going to have to do a budget amendment prior to January to recognize that $7,500 out of fund balance, because you didn't budget for that. You budgeted for merit, but you didn't budget for another $7,500 on top of that.
Could you give me the dollar amount for merit total?
It's $220,000.
220?
Across the whole entire county.
Okay, but of the, of that, do you know how much Sheriff's Department gives?
That with, someone else asked that question. I want to say last year was somewhere in the 50 to $60,000 range.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of this one-time $7,500 additional funds to be paid to the SWAT and K-9 unit, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's raise some hands. Motion carries.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, item number 13, State Board of Education Resolution. Presenter is Commissioner Jan Lauter.
...professional misconduct violations of local school personnel by the State Board of Education. Whereas, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners has a vested interest in protecting the integrity and effectiveness of the local public school system, and whereas allegations of professional misconduct by local school personnel may impact the public's confidence in the school system's ability to educate our children, and whereas it is the Stanley County Board of Commissioners understanding allegations of professional misconduct by local school personnel have been brought to the attention of the North Carolina State Board of Education for review. Now therefore, be it resolved, Stanley County Board of Commissioners kindly request prompt review of the professional misconduct allegations in an effort to bring closure to the process so our local public school system can move forward in a positive and productive matter for the sake of our children, students, excuse me, sir. Adopted this the 5th day of September, 2017. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Hey, Commissioner Lauter made the motion to present the resolution as presented. Do we have a second?
Like it.
We have a first and a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Any other comments before we vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, I think that this is a little premature. I don't think you've given the School Board time that, what, what this is in regards to has just, had come out, maybe, what, a week, two weeks before they met? They're, they're at their second meeting right now, so we don't even know what's going on. I don't think, I think it's okay as a, to have personal feelings in regards to this as an elected official. I think this is overstepping with our other, I mean, the School Board is an elected board as well. I think we should give them their time to make the decision, and then, I, I just don't think that they've had enough time to do anything, much less get enough research. I mean, I may have a different personal view of this, but as an elected official, I don't think right now is the time that this should be presented.
Thank you. Yes.
These are not my personal feelings. I'll go back to the oath of office I took. Now, it's not been that recent, because we know that an event happened, actually, I believe it was May the 30th, but nevertheless, the North Carolina State Board of Education is already aware of allegations of professional misconduct. This issue has been reported in local, and now in other outside news media outlets. The resolution presented this evening is asking only for a prompt review and to end the issue by its findings. It's like a black cloud over our county. Our not approving the resolution at this time is, quote, "kicking the can down the road," end quote, as some members of the Board stated at a previous Board of Commissioner meeting just last month about a different matter. We do not sit in judgment of the local Board of Education, as it is evidenced in the language of the resolution. The resolution does not offer this Board of County Commissioners individual or collective position on any of the allegations. The resolution requests only a prompt review by the North Carolina State Board of Education. As a member of this elected Board, I cannot support a wait-and-see strategy. The resolution, in my opinion, needs to be adopted this evening for the sake of our students, their parents, school personnel, and all our citizens. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lauter, I see you've got a prepared statement.
Yes, sir.
You referenced a date on May the 30th of something that went on. Where do you have evidence of anything actually taking place?
It was reported in the media, several of the Board of Commissioners members of this Board, I can't speak very clearly.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure things out, because I think this is just a little bit premature. I mean, I agree with the resolution on the surface, based on what I've heard, but that's just my personal feelings. You know, I've only read stuff in the media, so I don't have any firsthand knowledge of anything. I don't have any firsthand knowledge of any state board or organization having any input that I'm aware of. So, it just kind of puts me in a, I feel like it puts me in a little bit of an awkward situation, because I'm not aware of this stuff as factual or certain, and I think it's just a little bit premature, and I would just like to let the School Board kind of do their job, and that's all my concern. I mean, I would like to see us maybe table it, just, just till we find out a little more about what's going on.
Other comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, as Ms. Lauter stated, this is not anyway directed at the School Board, or we're trying to do their business. It's just that the State Board of Education, it has been reported on the TV that Channel 9, that they were investigating, or at least looking into the situation. And that's all it's asking for, and we're not, we're not accusing anybody. This does not accuse anybody. It doesn't blame the School Board, it doesn't blame anybody. It's just allegations, and we'd just like to see it put to rest.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
The key wording is, a request to the State Board of Education for a prompt review and action, that's all it is. It's not condemnation of any School Board members, or the, or the Stanley County Board of Education, or any individuals. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just think this is, I mean, I understand, like, where this is coming from, but, I mean, at the same time, and if the North Carolina State Board of Education is actually reviewing this case, which, as much information as I've seen was Channel 9 said it was investigating, if there was some kind of gross misconduct, I would say that they would give a prompt response. I don't have any of the information outside of what I read in the paper and saw on the new, on TV, so I couldn't make, but I just, I mean, I just don't think this is needed right this time.
I have a comment. Personnel matters sometimes take a long time before action's taken. I agree with this resolution, but I too think it's a School Board issue, and I do know they're meeting tonight, and I would hope that they're addressing some of this particular topic that we're talking about. I too cannot support signing this tonight. I think we need to wait and see what they do during the month of September before we take any action, so I would ask that this be tabled until our next meeting, if that's possible. Ready to vote? Everybody ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all, all in favor of this resolution tonight, please raise your hand. All opposed to signing this resolution tonight, please raise your hand. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would respectfully ask that we table this resolution for a later date.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this for a later date for review. Any questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would that table be at our next meeting?
I, I guess, the way my intentions of the motion is for whatever Commissioner deems necessary, you know, bring it up at whenever they deem necessary.
Mr. Chairman, this is kind of a question. If my parliamentary procedure serves me correct, the motion was voted down, you can't then table it, you have to reintroduce it at a later date.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain, for correcting me. You're a good parliamentarian. Is that correct? Counselor?
I believe so, sir.
Okay, so, the motion failed. I guess it could be brought back up at a later date.
I'll withdraw that motion then.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe that anyone who voted... Let's regard that.
Chairman Lawhan. Okay. Okay. Rule 19, motion to reconsider, the motion must be made at the same meeting at which the original vote was taken by a member who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay.
Commissioner Burleson was a member of the prevailing side.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. I would, I would think you could put it back on the agenda whenever you're ready, if you become ready at some future date.
So, do we need any action?
I think the motion, I think there was confusion. The motion to reconsider, I think, would be, have to be done at the same meeting. So, a motion to table is not necessary, because you already voted on the motion to approve the resolution tonight. So, I think if you want to bring it back at a future date, you may do so.
Okay, so there's no action, further action tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, consent agenda. Everybody has had the opportunity to look at it, item number 14, and we've added the senior center analysis to that. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Seconded by Commissioner Swain. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public comment, I'm going to call on Commissioner Morgan to... Public comment, I'm going to call on Commissioner Morgan to start. Public comment. I'm sorry, there's no public comments. Sorry about that. It is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Morgan?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Eifert?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for approving the fireworks. Locust's last concert finale will be September the 16th. The beach music group Fantastic Shakers will be there. It starts at 6 o'clock, fireworks around 9, 9:15. We would love to have you out in the city. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Burleson?
My comments were, I think, taken care of in your opening, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you doing that for the folks in Texas and surrounding areas. Just please keep everyone, any thoughts and prayers. That place is rough right now. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Lauter?
Yes, sir. School's begun, so I would like to remind everybody, please be, watch out for our school buses. That's the most valuable cargo and transport. Have a great day.
Commissioner McIntyre? Commissioner Swain?
I just have one. The, I'd like to thank, and I don't, I don't know who all planned it and hosted it, but the COG, the information we learned at the COG meeting, I'd like to thank that group. I know Mr. Joyner was there. Some of the other folks that were up here on the front row a little while back were there. I think it was kind of spearheaded by the county manager, but the, the information that was provided on drug abuse in, in Stanley County and North Carolina in general was just very eye-opening, and I'd like to just thank them for that presentation and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. County Manager Lucas?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Counselor Farr?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Ms. Tyler, do you have anything? Pretty good. Okay, all right. I do have a, I have a couple of things. I have a letter I want to read. This is from Charles Brown, and he says that, "Please know that I'm very appreciative to the board appointment for an additional one-year term to the Economic Development Commission. It has been an honor to have served over the last number of years. I will do my best to serve dependently, to serve effectively. Please convey my thanks to your fellow board members. Signed sincerely, Charles P. Brown." And then, on the economic side, I want to report on home building permits for the month of August 23. Permits were issued for a value of $3,890,000, which is great compared to last August of '16. There were 16 permits for $3.22 million. January through August, we've issued 182 home building permits, total value of $28,320,000, with an average home value of $155,601. Same period last year, we issued 127 for $20,230,000 with a value of $159,297. So, home building is going well in this county, and our numbers continue to increase, which means building supply and subcontractors are busy doing work, which buy groceries, buy goods, buy cars, buy trucks, buy tools, so our economy continues to improve. And that's all I have. And at this time, we do need to go into closed session according, accordance to, let me find my note here. There we go. To discuss a real estate transaction in accordance with G.S. dot 143 dash 318 dot 11A5.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move to go into closed session.
All right, second, first and second, all in favor, please rise, and let's head to the room.